Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Mayor and Commissioner meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting, February the 26th, 2018. And the next item on the agenda would be the invocation. Commissioner Olivia Pearson will do the introduction. Commissioner Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight we have with us Reverend Rudolph Porter, Pastor of Shallow Missionary Baptist Church, Tifton, Georgia. We're glad to have you Reverend Porter, if you'll step to the podium.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Colossians Chapter 6, verse 9 reads, "And let us not be weary in well-doing, for in due season we shall reap, if we faint not." To Heavenly Father, I pray for our mayor and all of the city commissioners. I pray for all of the citizens of Douglas, Georgia, Coffey County, the state of Georgia, the United States of America, and the world. To Heavenly Father, show us the plan, purpose, and will you have for our life. And like Nehemiah, give us the wisdom not to come down while we're doing this great work. Father, thank you for blessing seen and unseen. And let us be reminded that we can do all things through Christ which strengthens us. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we will have our pledge of allegiance. As always, we are led by the dynamic Coffey High Navy Junior ROTC. Once again, this is a fine group of young adults. Tonight we have Commander McKean, Ensign Ramirez, Ensign Ambriocio, and Chief Alvaros. If you would, please stand.
Left, right, knee down, left, face, present, arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms, right, face, over, march, left, left, right.
You may be seated. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes, which we've already discussed and placed on the consent agenda. So if you would strike item four, and also there were no work session items to be brought forward, was that correct?
Correct, sir.
So if you would strike item eight. Therefore, the next thing on the agenda would be approval of the order of the agenda.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we will have a brief pause to recognize some of our youth achievements in our city and our county. And to get us started...
Good evening, Mayor Pock, and good evening, city commissioners. My name is Beth Stern, and I am the sixth grade assistant principal for instruction at Coffey Middle School. I'm also the math and science curriculum director. And in my spare time, I have thoroughly enjoyed partnering with the Douglas Chamber, with this group of leaders in our district. This is the Leadership Coffey Youth Academy. And this is a leadership program that was dreamed part of the workforce development program where we could actually get seventh grade students to explore economic development, community progress in our community. This group has been able to develop leadership skills, going to ribbon cuttings, going to different chamber events, and also being leaders within our school. Some of them even held a position with the superintendent on his panel of prestigious students. So Mayor Pock, I am here today to present to you the 2017 Leadership Coffey Youth Academy. These are excellent and outstanding students who have been working very hard within our community. They are going to be visiting the courthouse on May 22nd, and we have been very fortunate with your help and barring your bus, and going to Atlanta on Friday, March 23rd. These are outstanding students. They had to go through an application process, they had to get two references. So this is a very, very select group within our community. And it gives me great privilege, and it gives me great pride and excitement to present these to you tonight.
Outstanding.
The first young lady I would like to present is Jaleen DeBrow. Jaleen, go ahead. She was the first place winner of our writing essay contest entitled Eggs and Issues. Our second place winner is Rayland Day. And I do want to mention Laura Kate Leese. She received third place in the writing contest and was not able to be with us tonight. But I do want to introduce also the rest of our great group. We have Tenation Mitchell, Minaja Holmes, Lauren Mercer, Katie Fussell, Caleb Eason. And I don't want to leave out Lisa Hodge. I would like for her to come up and be part because she is the interim president right now of our Douglas Chamber, and we are in partnership with the Coffey Douglas Chamber in this initiative.
Absolutely.
I want to say thank you very much for having us. Thank you for letting me present this group to you, and we look forward to building great leaders with your help, with the help of the Douglas Chamber and with our school system.
Everybody on the interview is tough here, right here. Everybody else is just right here.
The mayor had asked at the last meeting about youth achievements and recognitions, and I had called him and I told him I had one special. And I began to search our community of our young people that I come in contact with. And this young man came in my path, and I see this young man all the time, and he's such a great inspiration to me. He's the son of Mrs. Leary, Ms. Leary Townsend, and Mr. Cedric Williams. His mother has Luke Garrett's disease. And he compliment me so much because he goes home, he goes to school, and when he leaves school, he go home and he sees about his mother. And that just touched my heart because he also plays JV varsity with the basketball team that will be competing this week. And after he get through studying, I mean, he's a good student, I heard so much about him. And after that, he goes home and he sees about his mother and everything. And so I took it out of my own account, and I wanted to just acknowledge him on today because that's the greatest achievement for someone to take care of their parents and stuff. As a young person, as him, I just had to do this for him as an achievement because it means so much. Because it could be her today, and it could be me tomorrow. But it's good to have a young man that's, you know, that's a good child, and he's very obedient every time I ask him something, he say yes, sir, no, sir. But what touched my heart was, we don't know who's watching. He asked me the other day, when they had the basketball game, he say, Commissioner Durham, he say, will you, you'll come to my basketball game? You ain't never came. And I told him I was gonna come. And I went there with my two-piece suit on. The mayor was there also, but it just meant so much for him to ask me. So I took it upon myself and I went and got a plaque made for him, and I wanted the mayor to come with me so I could present this to you. Going out there again.
It's a good deal.
Your daddy can come up too.
I appreciate this so much. Defense.
It's basically reasons since the City of Douglas recognition of Mr. Cedric Williams for your hard work, sacrifices, great caregiver, and a well-rounded student. February the 26th, 2018, presented by Mayor Tony L. Park and Mayor Protim Contain One Carter Durham, City Commissioner, City Manager, and City Clerk.
Outstanding. Thank you.
My boy.
Outstanding. I actually have two more youths that sent me an email, and I just wanted to recognize. Many of you may know Dakarius Clark. I call him D. He's one of the young men that graduated from college, from South Georgia College, and then graduated from high school. He was dual enrollment. Everybody knows D. He's been an honor roll student, high GPA in several of his grades, gifted student, scholar athlete. He's made the dean list. He was selected as a model student for South Georgia College. He's a scholar from the C.C., C.U.P., Young Men of Distinction. He received the Sergeant Little Mike Scholarship, Divas of Douglas Scholarship, Oscar Street and Earth Street Scholarship. He was accepted at Clark Atlanta University and is currently a member of the Panthers football team. He was red-shirted. He's part of student government, and he plans on being an anesthesiologist. Now, those are just a few of the highlights of Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark is a very well-rounded individual and very inquisitive. So, and my next person, you may have seen her on Facebook, Ms. Shayla Harold. She's the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Jerome Loving and Mr. and Mrs. Sidney Harold, honor graduate from Coffey High School, 2011. She graduated from the University of Georgia Southern University, Magnum Coon Lottie, and on May 12th, she will receive her Juris Doctorate to be an attorney. So those are two individuals that I want to recognize. And let me say why I want to do this. As I was explaining in the hallway to the youth, it's so many times I think that our youth gets magnified just by a small group of individuals. If you've seen here today, we have individuals doing a lot of great things. But sometimes that child that's doing magnificent things does not receive the recognition or the attention. So what I want to be able to do as the mayor and with the support of the council is to be able to recognize our youth's outstanding achievement. And what I want to be able to do is say, look, our children, they have one problem. They're young. They're young. They're trying to find their way just like we are too. But I think that sometimes we can over-criticize and over-analyze and forget about their achievements. So I just wanted to take a pause to, as a commission, to say that we are paying attention to our youth, and we're very proud of the work that they're doing in our community. So thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts. Next on the agenda, we have the items that were placed on the consent agenda. As always, before I entertain a motion, we will have our city manager to read off those items that were placed on the consent agenda. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is the minutes for February the 12th, 2018. Next item is the approval to ratify, re-codify the city code of ordinances. Next is the approval of statewide engineering agreement, Elixir Anodyte LLC. Next is the annual baseball and softball equipment bid. Next is the approval of the gym A floor repairs. Next item is the Sears Quick Claim deed. The next item is the pole attachment license agreement with Georgia Power. The next item, and the last item, is the pole attachment agreement with Satilla R.E.M.C.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, the next item on the agenda will be staff comments, as always. What? No staff comment?
What you say? Woo!
Outstanding. Next, we'll have comments from the mayor and commission. Let's start out with Commissioner Gowen down there. Let's see what's on Mr. Gowen's mind. Commissioner Gow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to congratulate our Coffey High basketball teams. As everyone in town knows, both our girls and our boys won in advance to the Elite Eight. The boys beat Grove Town 74 to 70. That was an exciting game. I was able to get around there and see that. I don't think it was quite as close as the score shows, but the boys did a really good job. They'll be playing Langston Hughes up in Fairburn, which is still in Fulton County, the southwest part of Fulton County. That'll be Wednesday evening. We have a time on that, Stanley?
Yeah. Play at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Our girls are playing Tuesday night, Northview High School, which is Johns Creek, which is the north part of Fulton County. So anyone, obviously that's a long trip, but anybody can make it. It'll be well worth your effort to get up there and support our boys and girls in our basketball programs. I do want to mention that several people have mentioned to me, you know, we did have an incident that was reported in the local newspaper involving our police department, and I'm the liaison with the police department. And I just want to say that we've discussed it as a commission and looked over the situation. And we know that our chief of police and city manager are working on that and to resolve everything that needs to be resolved within our department. And I want to say, you know, our officers handle hundreds of calls every year, actually probably over a hundred a month with the department, but you know, ends up being thousands of calls. So, you know, they're human beings. People make mistakes from time to time. But for anyone out there who thinks that this example may mean they could get away with trying to harm someone in their house or in their family, I don't think you should have that assurance. Just because, you know, one guy gets away or whatever, I think, you know, by and large, our department does a great job, and these situations are always tough, but they'll, by and large, we handle things the way they need to be handled, and I appreciate them. I do want to mention one thing that's very personal to me, is with a lot of you, with your, you know, I've got five children in Coffey County schools. My wife is a teacher. I know many of y'all have grandchildren in schools. Obviously, probably could go without saying, but I believe it needs to be said, I hope that everyone with this latest school shooting incident down in Coral Springs have given this a lot of thought. And I want to encourage every one of you to contact our officials. I've spoken with Sheriff Wooton to kind of get an update on how things are within our school resource officers and working with our schools. I can tell you that he is in the process right now of making sure that our plans are updated, that our officers are trained, know where they need to be, that they're coordinated properly with the schools. Everything is being reviewed. He is determined, you know, he's got, he's like a lot of us, he's got grandchildren in those schools. And we don't want to have a situation come up and us not be prepared. And so I know that they're working on that. Our police department is committed to working with the sheriff's department to make sure that we can have the safest environment that we can in our schools. But I think, you know, we're at a point in time in our country, unfortunately, with the evil that's out there, and we can't overlook this situation any longer. And I hope that we're all out there encouraging our elected officials from the present all the way down here, at our level, that we need to review these and do everything that we can to make sure these situations don't arise again. I'll note, two of the young women that caught my attention, one was Elena Petty. She's a freshman at, it's Marjory Sherman Douglas High School, I'm sorry, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School down there in Coral Springs, a member of the junior ROTC, just like these young people we've had here tonight. This was her first year participating. She wanted to have an opportunity to give more service. It was noted that she is a person that's contributed hundreds of hours to help clean up after the hurricanes and storms down there in Florida, and wasn't a person that was afraid to get down there in the muck. Unfortunately, she was killed in that shooting incident, 14 years old, youngest of four children of Ryan and Kelly Petty. They said 1,000, 500 people attended that young woman's funeral. If that don't tell you something, I don't know what does. Another girl, another young woman, Madeline Maddie Wilford is a junior down there, played on the girls' basketball team. She was shot four times. Basically, a miracle that the young woman is still living. She was shot in the abdomen and in the arm, shattered her left arm, collapsed her lung. They said if the first responding paramedic that checked on her had not properly, had made a decision to send her to a closer hospital, she would have died. That's how close that young woman came to losing her life. And of course, that was one of, you know, 17 that were killed, 14 youth and three teachers. We can't let this stand, ladies and gentlemen. We cannot let it stand anymore. We've passed laws, you know, we have guns guarding our Capitol, guarding U.S. Capitol, Congress. You know, we've had a shooting incident in our courtrooms in Georgia. We passed laws, we've done something about it. You can't even take an open container of liquid onto an airliner in our country because of security. But what do we see for our children? We got a sign up somewhere that says gun-free school zone, which is basically an invitation for any of these people that are mentally unbalanced or evil to take a gun there because they know that they won't be opposed. So I just, you know, extend my call to many of you that we need to take action, we need to do something about it. And please let your congressmen, your senators, our local senators, I think they all probably have the same agenda right now, from the president on down. But now's the time that something needs to be done. We can't talk about it anymore, we can't put it on the back burner. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Gow. Mayor Protim?
Good evening, everyone. Basically, like he was saying about, you know, everything in the shooting and stuff like that, but as the Bible said, "My people will pray, turn from their wicked ways." He said that heal the land, but also the effectual fervent prayer of the righteous availed much. We got to pray in our communities, pray over our children, pray over our communities, pray over households, because this day and time we're living in, we don't know what it's coming to. It may be the school one day, and then it may be something else the other. But, I mean, we just got to come to the grips of, some things have to change. And, you know, some things have to change because I just feel like, you know, if these shooters keep happening, what is gonna be next? You know? It's a shame when you don't feel like you could be safe in your own home, in your own school, in your own church.
Right.
Just think about it, when they was in North Carolina, if I'm not mistaken, they was having church. Sunday school, haven't, just got shot up. But that's, I mean, something has to be done. But also, I want to say, congratulations, Ms. Pearson.
Thank you very much.
Yes, congratulations. And also, this is Black History Month, and I want to acknowledge a very great singer that I love so dear. Her name was Mahalia Jackson.
Okay.
And she toured a lot of countries and sung a lot of things, and also she sung right before Dr. Martin Luther King at the March in Washington, D.C., "How I Got Over." And that just encourages me, you know, that she paved the way for a lot of us today, and I never forget heritage and everything. And also, my hands go out to the boys and the girls, the basketball team, because I had a good time when I was out there. gave me some nachos and cheese. Got me a cocoa, but I was all about sleeping, ready to go. But I really enjoyed the game, you know? You know, if young people ask us to do something, don't just say, well, don't say no, just say, you know, just compromise. Because, I mean, when I was young, I wanted somebody to come listen to me at my band recital and, you know, just, you know, come to church with me, or, because I couldn't go to games really, because I had to go to church on Friday nights, because my grandma didn't play there. She just said, you're gonna be church Friday, Wednesday, and Sunday. So, but, you know, but we are, they're our generation today, and we must uphold them, and we must keep pushing them up, you know, and tell them to, you know, excel. And that's all I got to say.
Outstanding.
I got 11 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Commissioner McNeil.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was just trying to pull something up on my computer here. We've had a, we had a great last couple of weeks here in Douglas and Coffey County entertaining folks from out of our community, outside of our community, with the Tourism Roundtable Group we hosted. And I know Lisa can attest to this too, what an awesome job Georgia did, Georgia Henderson did, a great job getting these folks here, Lori Hennessy. Hats go, hat goes off to her for the wonderful work she did in bringing these folks from other communities into our town to see what we potentially might be able to share with folks on a tourism level, to get folks coming here. And those were great breakout sessions. They traveled and toured Douglas, Georgia, and I think some good things are going to come from that, from what I hear. And I'm real excited about it. I won't, I'm not going to spill the beans on that one, we'll let everybody see, but excited about that. Also, spent a little bit of time one afternoon honoring Mr. Clayton Mathis with the Camellia Gardens. And that was very well-deserved, great recognition for his family and his hard work and the things he's done for Douglas and Coffey County. And so that was quite a tribute. We have a special place in our garden at the Welcome Center here. And so I thank all of you for taking your time to come and do that. And the guys took up all the time. But I, you know, again, I agree with the comments about our schoolchildren and the importance of that, and I commend Beth on, you know, what she does for these young people, and with these young people, we have some great school resources, I think. And that's it, Mayor.
Outstanding. Thank you, Commissioner McNeil.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to thank the new people that are running the street department now, the job they're doing cleaning up and code enforcement on getting rid of some of these junk cars and junk people's yards and trying to make the city look better. The lady called me bragging on because they were edging her sidewalk on the Gaskin Avenue, and she was ready to go for that, and she went out and congratulated them. And sometimes you do hear good remarks, and they'll continue to do a job that people in the city of Douglas are proud of, and thank you for what the workers do, and amen. I agree with what Mike said, if something needs to be done, I don't know what it is, but as far as I'm aware, keep praying. That's mine.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I'd like to recognize all of the young people who are present tonight. You all reminded me of myself when I would come down to city council meetings with my mother when I was approximately you all's ages. So I'd just like to encourage you all to stay involved in your communities, because you all are our future. And if things are going to get better, we look to you all to make them better. So may God be with you all in your endeavors. You all are so bright, you're smart, you have the whole world ahead of you. And there's nothing that you cannot achieve if you put your mind to it and keep God first.
Amen.
So I pray for you all. You're living in a different world than, than what it was when I was coming up. Didn't have the, the drugs, didn't have the guns, the violence. Y'all are in a very tumultuous time, hard time. But keep God with you and all things are possible. So I, I pray for you, I pray for you all. Regarding the guns, you know, it's so sad what's going on. It's just so terrible. And, you know, when you think about it, things didn't used to be like this. But, you know, prayer came out of the schools and things started getting terrible. And we've got to go back to the old landmark. We just do. It's not enough to say that we love each other, but then we're doing things to hurt each other. You see, things, it's not going to work until we are sincere, until we really have love in our hearts for everyone, for everyone, regardless of the, the race, regardless of the gender. We've got to be sincere with this thing, because God knows our hearts. So y'all, and I'm not talking right now to our young folk, I'm talking to our older folk who, who supposed to know the way. This thing is real. It's real. You might can fool man, but you can't fool God. And until we become sincere about we love each other, you run the church every Sunday, run the Bible study, but then you're doing things to hurt people. God is not going to hear your prayers when you're not sincere. You've got to live by example, lead by example. I'm so, and, and with the gun things, listen, we don't need those automatic weapons or whatever they are that people are using. Why, why are people even allowed to purchase those kind of weapons? So until the government regulates, yes, we have a constitutional right to be able to bear arms, we have that right. But what, what, what is the use, what is the need for those automatic weapons that shoot rounds and rounds of ammunition? That, you don't use those for hunting. So I think people get those type of guns because they want to do someone some harm. So we've got to get our government officials' attention. This is just so sad that you cannot go to school without the fear of your life being taken. It's sad. I, I pray and I cry for the young people nowadays. Lord, please intervene, please intervene. This is Black History Month, I'm, I'm going to get off of that, we've all talked about it, but we are going to have to take some action.
Amen.
And whomever would like to try to organize for us to contact our legislators, let us do that. We've got to do something to stop this.
That's true.
If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And I know I'm very vocal about things that I feel when I'm very passionate about something, and I'm going to continue to be that way, you know? But, but we've got to do something. If we don't, then these young folk are going to hold us accountable one day, because things are only going to get worse until we put some type of legislation in place to curtail this foolishness with killing people. Lastly, considering that it's Black History Month, thank you, Mayor Protem Duran, for mentioning that. You know, we have made a lot of strides in our community in terms of Black History Month. Week or two ago, on the nineteenth Martin Luther King Committee had the celebration of the march, Martin Luther King March, and it was a nice turnout. I was sharing, Wooton was there, we had some young people marching. I just wish we could get more people involved, more people involved, because Dr. King gave his life for peace, for all of us to get along. And I think people tend to have forgotten about the price that has been paid for us to be where we are today, for those of us who can sit up here because we have a right to vote and elect who we want.
Amen.
People have died for us to be here, so we shouldn't dare take that lightly. Speaking of Black History Month, I am the first black female elected to city government in the city of Douglas. Proud of that, proud of that. More importantly than that is the fact that I take it so seriously, and I, and, and what I do is so important to me because of the training that I had from my mother, who got out there and marched and talked about people having equal rights. Because there, you, you young people might not know, but there was a time when everybody didn't have equal rights to go here, go there, whatever. Things are better, but things need to get even better than that, because it's got to get better in our hearts to make sure that we love one another. I mean truly and sincerely love one another. I recently, recently as of last week, Thursday, February twenty-second, was able to have a win in the judicial system. That meant a lot to me because I knew that I had done nothing wrong, but yet I was being persecuted and prosecuted, because I sit up there and here in this chair, and I'm very vocal. Well, that's one thing we do have, is freedom of speech. And I'm exercising my right to that freedom of speech by the people who elected me to come up here and represent them. So no one should want to take that away from me, because District Three has spoken that they wanted me to represent them. And anyone who has a problem with that, that's your problem. But to come after me with, with, with charges because you don't like what I stand for, it again shows a state of where we are. It's an injustice, and it's wrong, and we should all learn to treat people how we want to be treated. And there was a trial here in Coffee County. People I know, I've grown up with, and they wanted to say I was guilty. But a court, courtroom of strangers in Wayne County said not guilty. So I want to, before I say my last words, I want to just thank God the most high today, because it was God and those twelve jurors in Wayne County to do the right thing, to do the right thing. They didn't know anything about what was going on in Coffee County that I speak up and I speak out and didn't like me. They didn't know anything about that. They based it on what they heard, what the evidence was, and I give God the glory for that. So young people, because I worked in the prison system for several years, and I would interview inmates who said they were innocent, but they were in prison. And I would ask them, if you were innocent, why did you take a plea? And they would say, well, if I didn't take the plea, I ran the risk of getting more years. And that's sad. They were intimidated and scared into taking a plea when some of them were innocent, like I was innocent, but just a doorstep away from prison with that first trial I went through here in Coffee County. But to God be the glory that Wayne County saw fit to say that she's innocent and justice prevailed. So God bless each of you. Thank you for listening to me. But my heart is full, because I have endured quite a bit. But to you young people, I am so serious, you all can make a difference in this world. So please do so. Thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Outstanding. You can breathe?
I can breathe.
Outstanding. My comments are as follows. First of all, please forgive me, I forgot to acknowledge that Commissioner Taylor is absent. His wife, Ms. Bobby Jean, as everybody affectionately knows, had a little illness that he has to fulfill his husbandly duties in sickness and in health, is what it says. So he's fulfilling his duties. So please forgive me for not acknowledging that early on in the meeting. Next thing is those Coffee High Trojans. Man, I keep telling folks all the time, the greatest ambassadors that we have happen to put on two, three uniforms. Coffee High Trojans, Parks and Recreation, Navy ROTC. They are all over the state representing us. We have other civic organizations that are representing us all over the state. As I said, I went to a, to a Georgia football game last year, and we were introducing ourselves when we arrived at, see, hey, my name's Tony, this is my wife, Chevelle, we're from Douglas. Coffee High Trojans, that's the first thing they said. Coffee High Trojans, you down there where they really play football. So our unofficial and official ambassadors for the city of Douglas and Coffee County were always indebted to our youth. My next item is Elixir. I toured Elixir last week, and they don't just build trailer doors, folks. Hear me? There's some serious stuff going on out there at Elixir. They are, it would take me a while to tell you what they did. All I know is I went in there expecting to look at trailer doors, and I still hadn't seen the trailer door. And they ship internationally. Their products that are made here in Douglas, and they are looking to do an expansion here in the very near future, more jobs for the city of Douglas. Just had a, a real enlightening and educational visit with the president, Mr. Philip Smith, I believe. He was excited about Elixir, had me excited, had the employees excited, just a real good time out there. One of the things that you're going to notice is, the city of Douglas, we're going under a facelift, we're getting in the mode of cleaning up properties, junk cars, debris on the side of the road, trying to make our city more presentable. We have numerous of projects going on. My favorite, city center, new city hall, the new city pool in the Miracle Field, Jardine Stadium, just a whole bunch of things going on to make our city look, as I always like to say, always shining bright. The next thing is, I also want to say a special thanks, not only to our youth, but to our youth advisors, to our youth advisors that are willing to commit the time, energy, sometimes their personal funds, making sure that our young adults get to and from their desired locations, and providing some informal parental guidance. We need that. There's a book that says it takes a village to raise a child, you know? Y'all can read that stuff. So I also want to thank our coaches. When I think of a coach, I always think of Rodney Graham. How long has Rodney Graham been, been coaching in Parks and Recreation? Since it opened? You know what I mean?
Been a long time.
Long time. Coach Rodney Graham coaches any sport that you name, he will coach it. If you don't have a coach called Rodney, he'll figure it out. So always mindful of the coaches. And next is our teachers. Our teachers are very instrumental in that youth's life. And what we have to do is, we have to be appreciative. One of the things I tried, I had to learn as a parent, is you want a chorus of individuals singing the same song to your child. You don't just want to be the one individual telling your child not to do drugs. You need a teacher, the principal, the assistant principal, the pastor, the junior pastor, the choir, the ushers, the deacons, everybody in the community singing that same harmonious song to your children. My next thing is, I want to talk to you about our Mayor's Youth Council. We have a few of them here tonight. Again, we have our liaison, the adult liaison is Ms. Danitra Williams. We have with us Ms. Thor, Marys Carswell, Ms. Glover, and Ms. Cothran. Did I get everybody?
Yes.
Outstanding. This is one of the initiatives that we're starting with the Mayor's Youth Council or the Youth Council, to give our youth an introduction to government, to get a fundamental understanding of how it really works. And I always use this example here. The city of Douglas, what we do, nobody else in the city or the county does. We're not, we don't just provide power. Parks and Recreation, we're the only one that does this, along with the county. If you have a pothole, you don't call George Power, you call the city of Douglas. Fire, you call the city of Douglas. You don't call Sutil. Police problem, you call the city of Douglas. So what we do is try to make sure that the citizens have a harmonious and safe environment to live, work, and play. And we do that, but we also want our, our youth to recognize that also. My last comment is, I wasn't going to say anything about the gun shooting, because I, I have some opinions on that, but let me say this right here. The weapons that are used for these mass shootings are doing exactly what they were designed to do. They are doing exactly what they were designed to do. Maximum power at a maximum rate of speed. These are weapons of war. These are weapons of war. I tell anybody, if you want to shoot them, you could go join the Army, the Marine Corps, the Navy, the Air Force, or the Coast Guard. We'll give you all the high-powered rifles you need. But one of the things we also must understand, we talk about how we're going to leave this country for our youth, as far as a budget, as far as needs-based programs and this and that. Well, we have a, a different obligation. We have to try to create an environment to get our youth to be adults, to take over this country. We have to be willing to have a hard conversation, a hard conversation, that it's not going to be comfortable. It's just not, I'm a gun on, I'm a gun on, but I own an offensive weapon, not, not a defensive weapon. So my thing is this right here. We, we have a problem with certain things. Freedom of speech, freedom of speech. Commissioner Pearson crucifying. She has the right to speak her voice. She has the right to speak her voice. So when individuals decide that they want to take her freedoms, but protect the Second Amendment, a right is a right, and a freedom is a freedom. They all have equal weight. I always ask this right here, read the Second Amendment. It says, "A well-regulated militia." A well-regulated militia. That's what the Second Amendment says. I'm going to tell you like this right here. Sandy Hook hurt me. I didn't know any of those children. But to be a parent, to drop your child off at an elementary school, and to get a call saying that your child was massacred, I sat there and I cried. I cried. I tell anybody, I cried, that hurt. A parent to bury their child? That's not the way God intended it. We, as adults in the room, we have to make a decision at the state and at our federal legislative bodies, we have to set the tone.
That's right.
You know, so we have a group of teenagers in Florida that are trying to get some attention. I'm just saying this right here. Forget the Second Amendment. Forget the Second Amendment. If seventeen parents had to bury their child? It's seventeen. How would you feel? How would you feel right now? Right now, if you were planning your child's funeral at thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen years old?
That's not right.
Folks, that's not right. That's not right. We can do better. We can do better as adults. We can do better. And I ask that your prayers go out to those, those children's family in that community. I ask that. That will conclude my comments at this time. I do believe we have an executive session. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So who?
It's been motion and second, and further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Outstanding. We have everybody depart, and then we will go into executive session. Thank y'all for coming.